Oh, ha, you just slapped me around a little bit.
You're good. And she wants to stand in the front like a president.
You ready?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell? Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Next item is the moment of silence, statement by board clerk, Brandy Roulette.
As we begin this meeting, let us pause for a 60-second moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or engage in any other silent activity. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the pledge of allegiance, which is led by Allison Moreau. Did I say that correctly? Third grader from Arrowhead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the first world with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, thank you.
Allison, you did awesome. You nailed it. Give me a fist bump. Good job. Tell me about your favorite thing that you enjoy about school.
I enjoyed helping students and helping teachers, and I can, and I can follow directions or pay attention to teacher.
That's awesome. Good job.
Hey Allison, my name's Jerry. How you doing? How about I get a fist bump? Oh, nice job. So what do you want to do when you grow up?
Um, I'm not sure. I'm gonna become a newscast.
All right.
And I'm, and I'm gonna become a music creator, and I'm gonna become a creator, and when the sorry clips comes, I'm gonna put an Instagram post, and it'll be like this. Don't forget to use your eclipse glasses.
Hey, good job. Allison, can I get a picture with you up front here?
Uh, uh. Uh, yes, sir. I have, I have.
Any guests of Allison that want to come up and take a picture, please, please jump up.
Okay.
All right, you did such a good job. Thank you. All right. That's awesome. So the next item is the approval of the regular board meeting minutes for March 11th, 2024.
I make, make a motion to approve.
I second.
Okay, motion made, second, please call the roll.
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is the discussion motion, Ms. Bauker. There we go. Sorry about that. Don't mean to rush you. Let me slow my roll a little.
Good evening, Mr. Perry and members of the board. Tonight I am seeking your approval for donation of labor and materials to build a storage shed at Aspen Creek ECC valued at $6,005. And we have Vanguard Teacher of the Year Reese Hunley and Aspen Creek ECC multi-H pre-KK teacher Amanda Hunley, husband and wife team here tonight to share with you all about the project.
All right on.
All right, thank you. So a couple of years ago, this project began with one of our design teams at Vanguard. In our design rotation class, they set out to explore the needs in our district. And so we, our students reached out to Aspen Creek ECC to explore some of their needs there and looking to leave a positive impact on, on their school and improve the experience for the students and the teachers there. So they identified that there was a critical need there on the playground to have a, a storage shed to be able to significantly increase just the, the operations and the workflow on, on the playground.
So tonight, we would like to recognize Jeremy Milton from WRA Architects and Jody Vivian from Flint Co. for not only making this shed a possibility, but for also just investing your time and your resources into our students and our district to donate labor and materials, and we just appreciate you. We want to thank you for helping us clean up.
But I tell you what, in today's world, it is amazing to have partners like this that help us with some of the needs that are out there. And for you guys to take it to the school, I think that is extra special. I mean, what a story, all the way around. So thank you guys very much. So we need to get your old picture up here. That's right. Man, thank you guys very much. Good job.
Yeah, thank you, Jerry. Thank you. Thank you guys.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate y'all donating your time and money and all. Appreciate it.
I want to, I want to recognize Ms. Hunley was site teacher the year last year at Aspen Creek. So you got a husband and wife team, back-to-back site teachers of the year at their respective elementary, so that says a lot about them.
Amen.
Oh, she's a finalist.
Yeah, that's right, finalist.
All right, Ms. Hutchings.
Mister?
Mister.
Mister, sorry. Excuse me. Oh, yeah, we do. Sorry about that. Man, I'm trying to roll through this. I gotta back up. All right, one moment. All right, so.
I make a motion to approve the donation.
I second.
Okay, motion and second's been called, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Talk about giving money away, I get all excited and flabbered. Go ahead.
Good evening, members of the school board and Superintendent Perry. I'm here this evening to seek an approval for generous donation from Rosewood's PTA in the amount of $5,689. This donations, donation is intended to purchase new adaptive playground equipment for our school's outdoor play area. Over the past, well, this year, we've found a, a rising need for us to be able to have wheelchair-accessible equipment on our playground. And so we've worked with Mr. Shackelford, Mr. Shepherd, and their team to come up with a way that we can do that. And our PTA has been amazing, and been able to work closely with them to find resources and select playground equipment for that area of our playground. I have with me Ms. Adrian Francis, our PTA president. It's just, it's amazing to me how a, a PTA can just really feel like just part of the school, and they're up there so much, they just feel like a part of who we are. So I really appreciate them.
I tell you what, we had the honor of being able to recognize a couple of other PTAs last month, and so just to continue seeing this kind of just gift, I mean, it's remarkable. And, you know, again, it's just part of the family. And so honestly, thank you very much, so.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Any questions?
As, as a mom, I was PTA president for a few years, and I know the hard work that you put into it, so it's greatly appreciated, thank you.
No, I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Okay, motion and second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Thank you guys. This next item, I'll, I'll cover it, and, you know, the Board of Education truly values the hard work of our employees, I mean, on a daily basis. And, and I've always said, you know, education is true calling of, of people that do this type of work, and so the things that you guys do daily truly directly impacts the lives of our students, our district, and everything. And so, you know, it's pretty incredible, and the great thing is, is in tough climates of education, and for us, we value the loyalty and perseverance of our employees and what you all do day in, day out, sometimes on weekends, sometimes on evenings. But again, it's something that, you know, we've looked at, and, you know, as a board, we've reviewed kind of our district's financial position. And so it is at our pleasure to recommend to returning employees, all returning employees, for the 2024 and 25 school year to receive a 3% one-time stipend of their base pay. So, you know, any discussion or questions on this or comments? Welcome some more comments.
Well, I know nothing's gonna impact our students more than having great adults, teachers, bus drivers, child nutrition workers, takes everyone, custodians across the board, to produce a quality education that our students are really gonna benefit now and down the road, and just so thankful for a board that recognizes that and wants to recognize our employees. If we take care of the adults, I feel like they'll take care of the students, and I think that's a testament to what you all have shown year after year with your commitment to this. So kudos to Ms. Eniff and her team to financially look at the best way that we can do something like this and communicating with you all, and so just very thankful.
Absolutely agree. I mean, with our team of finance professionals, we couldn't ask for any better. So thank you for what you do to help us get to this point.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you, and we want to keep, we want to keep the best here in Broken Arrow, and if we can invest in our teachers, then we're, that's what we hope to do. And I said just teachers, but it's to everyone.
Returning.
Returning. So I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay, motion and second's been made, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Again, next item that I want to talk about is, you know, we have one common and popular suggestion made during one of the district's thought exchange session was the idea of employees receiving a stipend during the holiday season. You know, again, we listen to these things, and tonight, the Board of Education is pleased to recommend a one-time Christmas stipend for all employees of the Broken Arrow Public School District in the amount of 2% of their base pay. This will include all newly hired employees who join our district for the 24-25 school year. You know, as a board, we greatly appreciate all the district, or all the efforts of all of our district's employees, and we're happy to be able to provide some financial assistance during this time of the year. You know, it's always busy, and we're always trying to stretch, so. That's my comment.
I think the thing that sticks out to me in this is last year, you know, we gave a stipend just to the returning employees, and we love this idea behind this that will allow us to reward those that choose Broken Arrow for the next school year. So returning employees, we get a total of 5%, which is a very significant amount, and then we have some too for all those, again, that make the decision to be a Broken Arrow Tiger, and we're proud of that.
We want to attract the best and keep the best, so thank you guys.
Absolutely. We are thankful for you all through the year.
With that being said, I make a motion to approve.
Perfect. I second that.
Okay, motion's been, excuse me, motion's been made, second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
And I, I think the significance of this too is that you all wanted to do this early at this board meeting, so that for next year, we, we retain people. People don't leave us, and we're very intentional about that of not doing this just last second. So again, thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I know that's something that we did consider, and again, you know, in today's world of, you see the shrinking environment of teachers coming to the calling, and so it makes it difficult year after year to keep and retain the best of the best. But, you know, us as, as a board have had those discussions where we want to be one of the best districts, one of the most attractive districts in the region, so you know, make it easy for us.
This is significant, so thank you.
Good deal. All right, next item, Mr. Savington.
Good evening, Mr. Perry and members of the board. Tonight, we are seeking your approval to hire Sean Brandon as Associate Principal of Operations at Broken Arrow High School. Mr. Brandon is currently serving as an Assistant Principal at the high school. Mr. Brandon has been with the district for 10 years and has, has established positive working relationships with many of the people that he will be working with in this new role. With your approval, we are excited to see Mr. Brandon thrive in this new position.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
All right, motion's been made, a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
All right, is Mr. Brandon, where's? Oh, back. Thank you very much, Mr. Brandon, and do you have some special guests with you tonight, or?
I do, I do.
Outstanding.
This is my bride, Carrie.
Hello, Carrie.
Obviously my own aunt, and she is the Director of HR, Chief Administrator.
Right on.
This is my daughter Kate, she's a junior, and she skipped dinner tonight from Chalk and here, so.
Love the dedication. Give your dad support, that's good.
My, my son Will, he had a baseball game tonight, so he could be here. He's a senior, and he will be in, he's, he is part of scoring in the International Guard and probably going to basic training in August.
Nice.
Man, congratulations for a lot of things going on in your world, and so we look forward to. Okay. The next item are comments from the public, and we have none. Next item is the general consent items number 12 through 87. Any questions?
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Okay, motion's been made and second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Oh, there we go. All right. Perfect. All right, Ms. Dolahan, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Marvelous.
Good.
All right, next item.
Tonight, I'm here to give you first the Activity Fund reports at the end of March. The receipts for Mar, the receipts for the year as of March 31st total $4,496,000. Disbursements total $5,032,000, leaving a balance in the Activity Funds of $5,224,000.
Perfect. Any questions? Thank you.
For the Treasurers Report at the end of March, cash balances have a, have a balance of $129,411,000. Investments including in this figure are $32,154,000. Our collateral that is pledged to the district totals $10,350,000. The deposits that require collateral are $6,107,000, and leaving an available balance of collateral to the district of $4,243,000.
Any questions? Okay, nothing. Janet, just by the way, this didn't advance yet in the agenda.
Did it go now?
There it went, yes. That was 89, okay?
Thank you.
Next item, number 90 is, Ms. Sap.
Good evening. The first item I have tonight is for the change orders for the date range of March 7th through April 10th, 2024. It reflects a decrease of $365,174.74, and would recommend your approval on these.
All right, any questions?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, a motion's been made and a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Okay, next item.
The second item I have is for the encumbrance report. It's for the date range of March 7th through April 11th, 2024. It reflects encumbrances of $2267,474.30, and would recommend your approval on these encumbrances.
Okay. Any questions? Comments, okay, have none?
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Okay, a motion's been made and a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Ms. Eniff, next item.
In the final quarter of this fiscal year, it's hard to believe we're in April and just a few more months until we finish out school year '23, '24. And before I get started, clearly the reports that I'll be presenting tonight show a positive reflection of the district's financial position. It's been a great year in several different categories, obviously with the support of our state legislature approving what they have approved to go into the formula and directly impact salaries and positions and our students this year. But I would be remiss if I didn't thank the board for the support on the financial end. The stipends that were approved tonight obviously have a monetary impact for the district, but nothing gets done without the support of our Board of Education, so thank you for the support on that tonight. Looking at our state aid, you, you'll see a marked increase in this category. Again, with the amount of money that directly went into the formula, we were able to accomplish salary enhancements and added positions. Our ad valorem continues to be strong for us. We're continuing to see growth year after year in both Tulsa and Wagner County, and that is a very consistent stream of revenue for us, and we are very blessed in this community to see that kind of increase, because it not only affects our general fund and our sinking fund and our building fund, but our bonding capacity, which is extremely important as we continue to grow. Our federal sources are starting to level off as we are sunsetting our Essor dollars and the one-time COVID relief dollars that we've seen over the past three years, and so we'll start to see our federal dollars return to pre-pandemic normal levels in our title funds and in our IDEA funds. Building fund, again, ad valorem, very strong for us. Some of our state sources as one-time funding into this source in child nutrition. Looking at our federal source of revenue, our free and reduced numbers have increased, and so that significantly helps in that category, and then our local source of revenue just through our everyday student participation at our sites. Looking at our salaries, obviously the increase due to some one-time stipend approvals, additional money that went into the teacher scale and added positions, everything else, even with our inflation factor is looking pretty good through this time of year. We still have a couple more months of collections to expect, but yes, inflation has hit hard in some areas, but we've get it, done a relatively good job of weathering that and trying to make concessions in some other areas. And I'll just go to the end with the ending fund balance. Last year, we were a little bit above 40 million. As we continue to, this is the time of year we generally stop our routine spending, and the purpose of that is to try and start seeing where our ending fund balance will be for school year '24. I expect it to be at about the same level, barring any unexpected surprises in our final month of running payroll expenditures, and we'll continue to watch that as we move forward with the legislative session and as they hopefully are nearing passing a budget. At this point, we're not expecting any significant amount of money into the formula, but until it's signed, sealed, and delivered, we won't know until Siney died, Siney died day. May I answer any questions?
No, I don't have any. Great job, thank you. Okay, Mr. Leach.
Hit your ten up here.
I know.
Tonight, my first item I bring for your, I recommend for your approval, contract with WRA Architects, who will provide architectural services related to the design bidding and construction of the fine arts renovation that'll be at the high school campus, and authorize the director, Director of Construction Services to negotiate the terms of the contract. The cost of the district will be 7% of the cost of the work, and will be paid with 2023 bond funds.
Okay. Any questions? Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, a motion's been made and a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Leach, next item.
My next item, I recommend for your approval, a contract between Broken Arrow Schools and Flint Co. to budget, bid, and construct the fine arts renovation at the high school campus, and authorize the Director of Construction Services to negotiate the terms of the contract. Cost of the district will vary and be paid for with 2023 bond funds.
Any questions? Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Okay, motion's been made and a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
My next item, I recommend for your approval, a contract with WRA Architects, who will provide architectural services related to the design bidding and construction of the fencing and security project at the high school campus. Authorize the Director of Construction Services to negotiate the terms of the contract. Cost of the district will be 7% of the cost of the work and will be paid with 2023 bond funds.
And just in regards to the fencing and things like that, this is part of, I think, and I failed to mention it prior to that, but, you know, again, part of the reasoning why we passed those bonds was to really look at some of our security needs. How do we make our facilities safer for kids, especially in today's world? And so, again, I'm, I'm glad to see that, you know, we're putting these things on the books and putting planning ahead of this, and the substant- substantial nature and need behind that is there, so.
And I make a motion to approve. I second.
Okay, motion's been made and a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes. Mr. Leach again.
My next item, I recommend for your approval, a contract between Broken Arrow Schools and Magnum Construction for the construction manage- management services related to budgeting, bidding, and construction of the fence and safety upgrades at the high school campus. And authorize the Director of Construction Services to negotiate the terms of the contracts. Cost of the district will vary and be paid for with 2023 bond funds.
Any questions?
I make a motion to approve. I second.
Motion's been made and a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
My next item, number 97, I wish to table that issue and take it up in the next board meeting.
And just to clarify, the reason why we're tabling number 97?
Uh, there is an error on the agenda, sir.
Okay. Perfect. All right. So we'll need to get a motion from someone to table?
Um, um, motion to table item number 97 due to an error?
I second.
Okay, a motion's been made and a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
My next item, I recommend for your approval, contract between Broken Arrow Schools and Miller Tippens Construction for the construction management services related to budgeting, bidding, and construction of the Broken Arrow Schools transportation hub. And authorize the Director of Construction Services to negotiate the terms of the contracts. Cost of the district will vary and will be paid for with 2023 bond funds.
All right, yeah. True.
I move we approve that. Yes, I make a motion to approve.
Well, I had a motion over here.
Oh, you had a motion over here, I'm sorry Debbie. I second that motion. Yay.
Motion's been made and a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
My next item I recommend for your approval is a contract with GH2 Architects to provide architectural services related to the design bidding and construction of the classroom expansions at Rosewood Elementary. And authorize the Director of Construction Services to negotiate the terms of the contracts. Cost of the district will be 7% of the cost of the work and will be paid with general obligation bond funds.
Okay. Questions? Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
All right, motion's been made.
I second.
Okay, motion's been made and a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes. Number 100.
My next item I recommend for your approval is a contract with Miller Tippens Construction for the construction management services related to the budgeting, bidding, and construction for classroom expansions at Rosewood Elementary. And authorize the Director of Construction Services to negotiate the terms of the contract. Cost of the district will be $12,500 and will be paid for with general obligation bond funds.
Any questions?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I second.
Motion's been made and a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
My next item I recommend for your approval is contract with GH2 Architects, who will provide architectural services related to the, to the, to the design, bidding, and construction of the classroom expansions at Highland Park Elementary. And authorize the Director of Construction Services to negotiate the terms of the contract. Cost of the district will be 7% of the cost of the work and will be paid with general obligation bond funds.
Okay.
Yay.
I know.
So exciting. I make a motion to approve. I second.
Okay, motion's been made and a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Wouldn't these have been easier if you had just said like ditto, the last one just changed? I know, you kind of lied.
If only it were that simple, but the attorney is in gallery. Might frown on that sort of language.
And ditto doesn't work, does it?
Right. My next item I bring, recommend for your approval is a contract with Miller Tippens Construction for the construction management services related to the budgeting, bidding, and construction for classroom expansions at Highland Park Elementary. And to authorize the Director of Construction Services to negotiate the terms of the contract. Cost of the district will be $12,500 and paid for with general obligation bond funds.
And again, this is part of the bond issue that passed and gave us some more classroom space at these two sites, which will be huge.
Is this different from 101?
Just a different site.
It was Highland, right?
Yes.
One is an architectural and one is construction management.
Yes, sir.
I see you. I move we approve.
I second.
Motion's been made and a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
And my last item, I recommend for your approval, a contract with Magnum Construction for the construction management services related to budgeting, bidding, and construction for the Broken Arrow High School Memorial Stadium bleachers upgrade. And to authorize the Director of Construction Services to negotiate the terms of the contract. Cost of the district will vary and will be, will be paid for with general obligation bond funds.
And what, what area of bleachers will this be?
This particularly is the student section, uh, that we may know as the jungle bleachers.
Yeah, that baby gets packed quite a bit, so there's a need to definitely make that a little bit better and expand and do some things. And before we take on this, I tell you what, that, the great thing is, is looking at everything that we have going on, and that's the value of being able to pass some of these bonds. Not only can we address security needs, but growth needs, classroom needs, and so, again, going on record of thanking our constituents, thanking our district, thanking all the people of Broken Arrow, um, for really allowing us to be able to do these things. And it's, it's, you know, a great honor to not just frivolous, frivolously spend this money, and it's great to see what we're doing here. So, thank you guys for putting this together of what our priorities are and, you know, y'all are gonna be busy, so this is exciting.
Yes, sir.
And that's what I was gonna say too, is think, it seems fast, you know, like, seems like everything takes so much time, but it, the bond was only voted on five months ago, and you guys have already brought all this to us, so thank you for.
I've, I've already had preliminary discussions with all of these architects, uh, have some concepts working. All of these construction managers are on board and we're ready to hit the ground running.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So, um.
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
I second.
Okay, motion's been made and a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes. Okay. Ms. James? There you go. She ran out. No, I'm just kidding.
Good evening, board members and Mr. Perry. Um, this evening, I'm excited to share a legislative update. You don't always hear those two words in the same sentence, but, um, there's a few things that we as a district have had our eyes on that we've been kind of following along as it's gone through the procedures of the legislation. So I'm gonna share a few that I feel are important, that we need to keep our eyes on and that we're excited about. There's a couple of things I wanted to share with you just as school board. Um, there were two bills, they failed, but they had a lot of, uh, support, so I'd look for them to come back and carry back over next year. But one of them is they're wanting to move the election days to November. So, there was a lot of talk back and forth, so it's still kind of on everybody's radar, so I do feel like it might come back up for discussion next session. The second thing is then to limit the elections to every two years in November. So, that too failed. But I do, again, think that might come back to, for us to be seeing that. One last thing, um, regards to the school board, is the administrative rules that are put out by the State Department or the Oklahoma School Board Association. They have, or not the school board, but the Oklahoma State Department School Board, let me clarify. They have asked that Oklahoma School, School Board Association be removed from the list of, um, agencies in which school board members can receive training. Uh, I watched it today, I listened to what they had to say, they weren't real clear about why, they just want it stricken. So, yeah. It's limited to Career Tech and Oklahoma State Department and anybody else that the State Department approves. They didn't list anything. The argument today was if it's legislatively, if they can do that based on what the Attorney General has shared with them, but they argued it back and forth, but we'll see how the vote comes out. They'll be taking a vote, um, in the House soon too and having that discussion and back to the Senate, so I'll keep you updated.
So that's not finalized yet?
It's not finalized, but it is been placed before them and they should be taking a vote on it probably next week or so, so.
And that's where I think, you know, as constituents to them, we can sometimes take up. Sometimes we can show support of or no support of a certain, uh, bill, and again, I, I advocate for whoever wants to make calls or whatever to their representatives, please do, because, um, I think, you know, even though you may feel like, gosh, I can't make a difference, it's those calls that they do get posted, they do get logged, and so, um, you know, just even a quick call and saying, I don't support X or whatever, um, can, or I do support something, does make a difference, and it makes them listen to people that are out here and, uh, that will vote for them the next time, or not.
Do you have the, the number of that bill?
Oh, gosh, it will be, it's, I'll send it to you guys if that's possible. It's not a bill, it's really through the Oklahoma statute, so it's like OS 210-35-218. I'm almost sure it's that, but I will share it with Mr. Perry, maybe he can get it out to you guys, is that okay?
Yeah.
Uh, but like, it's still in discussion, so, but I do think it needs to be on our radar. There, yes, ma'am. Ryan Walters and the, yeah, the State School Board.
State Department's putting it forward, be one of the rules that they're changing, but.
Yeah.
Correct.
So there's a discussion whether or not they have the rights to make that change legislatively, because the Attorney General in the past, back April, said, no, you do not, so there's a lot of going back and forth on that, but I do, we were hoping to meet with one of the gentlemen who supported, he was against this rule, so I thought tomorrow, if I can get in front of him and have a conversation, just say, we appreciate that, and that, you know, we do feel like we need to have that opportunity to go to OSSBA for training, if that's what we choose to do.
I mean, personally, I have, you know, in, in my 20 years of being on the board, um, that has probably been one of the most valuable resources I have ever looked to, regard, whether it was training or learning new roles as a member of a school board, and, you know, even a new school board member has the opportunity to go to these sessions and learn things. Um, and not just national things, I'm talking local to Oklahoma, and that is so critical, and so for them to try and say that that's not a valuable resource is, i- it's really bizarre to me to think that somebody can think that. Um, and it's irritating that they're trying to make the choice for us individuals that value, or at least I personally value an organization like that, and have been able to succeed in my role, and anytime I've ever had a question, I can reach out and get somebody on the phone immediately. Zero cost to me, zero cost to the district, other than some of our P's, but it's a very, very informative group. They put on training seminars, they put on conferences that are invaluable to new board members, veteran board members, and, you know, even for, you know, we share those courses with superintendents and assistant superintendents, and it is exceptionally important for us to continue to have those available to us.
I will definitely share that information, because it does help me have that background. Um, they, all of the, the senators were only allowed to ask one question and no follow-up. So, and nobody asked, why do you want to stricken this, this association from that? So, I would have asked that, but it didn't.
Well, that was gonna be my next question.
No, nobody asked that, and, um, they didn't elaborate, so. There was no debate today at all, just discussion of the, the rules, so. I will keep you updated and I'll definitely share that information. It gives me something to visit with the senator about and the representatives.
You'll want to share my number with them too, if they want to call me.
Okay, absolutely.
Mine too.
Will do, thank you. Um, two bills that we did support, but unfortunately failed, and we'll just keep, uh, trying to, um, encourage our legislators to continue fighting the good fight, but one of them was to offer a 10% increase in, uh, pay for special ed teachers. It's one of our highest shortages in the state, probably across, across the country. But it did not pass, they didn't get that movement going, so hopefully they'll revisit it soon, but we were supporting that. And second was a support staff stipend increase that we really wanted, and Mr. Perry was hoping that would get some movement just to support our support staff as well, but it didn't kind of garner much, uh, support, unfortunately. And I don't know if it's based on the appropriation budget, if they felt it was too much, I am unsure what their decision was. Now, um, one of the bills, was there any questions on that one before I move on?
No, thank you.
One of the bills is, I, I thought this was interesting, is expanding the Lindsay Nicole Henry Scholarship for students with disabilities. It really is a private school voucher, um, in forms of what it is. It does expand the private school vouchers, and what it does is it says, if you're a private school, um, entity or a charter school who doesn't charge tuition, then, um, individuals can donate money to your private entity for their buildings, so you can add to their buildings. And then you get to turn around and write that off, so it'd be almost a tax credit to them. The cost, because that's almost like moving money from us to the, the, the private entities. Right now, this past year, it's been, um, a $10 million in state aid lost to public school. And they have not listed what it would cost us if they passed this piece. So, we'll keep watching on that, but they haven't released what it'll cost, but there are, there's concerns. There was another bill they tried to get to where it was an offer a tax credit to anybody who made a donation to a private school or charter, and then you could write that off too, and they could do what they want with that money with no accountability attached to that at all. So, thankfully it failed, but, um, the other one has passed out of both houses, so we'll have to wait and see if the governor approves with that.
Again, it's just so alarming that our state superintendent, who is supposed to be a person advocating for public education or all education, but he is so far removed from supporting public education, it just absolutely is, is astonishing to me that, you know, all these things are just other ways to try and divert money away from public education funding, which is already not very great, and, you know, we've seen some improvements, but it's just alarming to me that we have an individual that is taking these steps, and, you know, it's just the support behind it, I, I pray and hope to advocate that it's not there. And again, this is very key to, if we can make phone calls, or if you get an opportunity to be in front of a legislator, or even a note to them, an email to them or something, it, it can be influential in the sense of telling these individuals that, um, public education has to be funded and it, it is a necessity. Because, you know, not every private organization out there or every charter school can meet the needs or deliver. I've yet to see one be able to deliver the magnitude of programs that we have here at Broken Arrow Public Schools, and especially in the SPED area as well. And, you know, again, that's something that, you know, I, I agree, trying to find SPED teachers is an exceptionally hard task, and, um, you know, that's, again, I, I think it's an area that we've got to look at, but, yeah, so anything we can do to prevent these things taken away from or funding going away from public education is, is critical.
It's interesting, you shared that, uh, was that in Oklahoma City, I don't know, a month or so ago, but I was able to hear Lieutenant Governor Partnell speak, and he bragged on Broken Arrow, told what a great job we were doing, but he also mentioned that he supports public education, and he was like, we have 700,000 students who attend public education. And to just begin to disseminate the public ed is not good for our state. So I was excited to hear other people, you know, at that level, supporting and saying the same thing.
Yeah, and I agree, I mean, and the other thing that I'm, I, I'm an optimist. Yeah, and I agree, I mean, and the other thing that I'm, I'm an optimist, so hearing these conversations about trying to get funding for public education or raising teachers' pay and things like that, I mean, it's occurring more, I mean, we're not there yet, but I'm glad to see that there are at least some conversations taking place, for the longest time, nothing was being talked about, and so, again, I'm optimistic that, you know, the outcomes will be what we hope for, but, you know.
Me too.
We keep pushing.
Absolutely. Another bill, which is State Bill 1768, is about virtual days, this has been a huge media thing, I know Ms. Tara Thompson has been fielding a lot of the questions from different people, asking us about where we fall with this, so the basis of the bill is that when it first went through the Senate, as it was created, was that we could not have any virtual days except for weather or shortage of staff, or like COVID, if that was to happen again. If you did have a virtual day, you could do that, but you would be required to have five hours of synchronous, of which four is asynchronous in that, for K through 8th grade, which my argument to that is that we don't even offer that type of uninterrupted instruction during the school day, kids are up and about and, you know, moving and all that good stuff, so to us, it's not even research-based with that number, it's even more so from 9th through 12th grade. So I went in to visit with Senator Thompson, I took our framework for distance learning day to show what we're doing, because, and I went to her because I understand there are some districts that are offering 50 virtual days, and I can't speak to what their needs are or what fits their community, but I did tell her, I'm like, in Broken Arrow, we value instructional time, we know being in front of a student or in front of a teacher is the most important piece. I said, unfortunately though, we have too many teachers who are learning on the job, they're coming to us, you know, emergency certified or alternative certified, or in some cases, an adjunct, in which they're not even certified in that, so we're having to provide training and teaching for these teachers, and we can't do that off hours, so we use, you know, our six distant learning days throughout the year and a couple others to support that learning, to support that, because I feel like if we can pull 10 days out, then the other days are more impactful, but we train for the teachers. So Senator Thompson, she was impressed with our framework, and she did say, not one other district has ever shared that with her, and I'm like, well, I feel like we're doing it right, and our School Board has approved it, the local control there, and she's like, well, it's great, but you guys are an outlier, this isn't the norm, so it was good to hear that, I mean, you do, we work really hard and think, oh my gosh, we're not doing enough, but then you're like, nobody's doing that, and you're like, wow, you know, it was impressive, but she didn't really have time, a quick turnaround, to make that change, but so I was able to visit with Representative Baker, and I said, and she said, what would you want the bill to say if you could write it, and I said, I would like you to say, we can have up to 10 days that would include professional development, alleviate us from those requirements of synchronous and asynchronous, so she did present that, not this from me, I'm sure other people were asking, but she did present that to the House and they agreed, she now has some people looking into the hours, because I told her that too, that's not research-based, we spent time during COVID, when we were having students being virtual and what was appropriate and what we should set as expectations, we based that on research, and that, what they're saying is not, so she was having somebody else look into that, so I feel good about that, she did say that if Senate won't approve it, then she's like, well, then it's not going through, because it's not really a hill I think that she wanted to die on. The next one, which is a great, kind of financially, is a House bill that removes the limitations on our school district general fund, so you can carry over, right now, you can only carry over, I think, 14% or something, 17, so you can carry over that much, and I know as a district, Mr. Perry and I were talking, that our goal is not to hoard money, we want to be spending it for kids, but there are times that carrying over some money would be beneficial to us, for instance, if we're having to pay higher insurance premiums, let's say we have our bond monies out and we have a roof, you know, starts leaking, then maybe it's going to cost too much in that year, you could carry enough over to help support that and get that fixed in that following year, so what they're talking about with this, and it passed through both Houses, is it increases the carryover by 5%, so that would put it almost at 20%, and then carry over 50% of our gross production, when I went and looked that up, that means the oil and gas that we get in our county that we collect, that every, you know, is based on that, so we could carry over half of that, so I do think that's helpful moving forward with our, so. Also, we have a bill, this is a great one, we have our teacher shortage, so they are aware of that, what they had placed, there were several bills, and what ended up happening is they were combined, so Senate Bill 1520 basically says, hey, we're going to allow retirees to come back after the 60-day waiting period, but there's concessions, and the reason is, I think it costs more than they really thought it was going to cost, the budget came back, and I just think the State Department, you know, they were like, oh, I don't know, or legislators were like, I don't know if we have the funding for that, but what they're allowing us to do is if you're a retiree from 55 to 59 and a half, the limit on allowed earnings would be the lesser of two, either 30,000 or half of what you've made. The good news is, if you're over that 59 and a half, you can come back at full pay, okay, there's no reduction at that point, so the previous bill really wanted it all to be that everybody could have full, but I don't, I just don't think they had the budget in place to do that, but at least that helps us with the qualified teachers who might want to come back, they're not penalized, and it makes it worth their while to teach a full day, so.
And I think that's a big one, because we have a lot of retired teachers that will go to Arkansas or Texas and draw a retirement there after they're vested, and this keeps them back here in Oklahoma.
Right, if they're going to double dip, they might as well double dip with us, right? The House bill, this is a great one for our teachers, we shared it with the Teacher Advisory a few days ago, the state has come up with another way to recruit teachers, is to say, we're going to qualify your students in a specific tuition scholarship, so currently there is something known as OHLAP, O-H-L-A-P, it's Oklahoma Higher Learning, I forget what the rest of it is, but also it's known by Oklahoma's Promise, so basically what it is, is our students who qualify between 8th, 9th, and 10th grade, if their parents are making a certain amount or less, they would qualify for Oklahoma's Promise, then as a senior, they could go into school and they have to show what they make at that point, which is an increase, but you would have to meet that amount, if you did, then you would get free tuition at any state college or university, okay, still pay fees, things like that, but the tuition would be gone, but they have expanded this to include children of all certified classroom teachers, I don't know what that definition, if it includes admins or not, I'm trying to figure it out if that would include administrators, but right now, they just say certified classroom teachers who have had at least 10 years in Oklahoma working as a teacher, not consecutively, but total, and then that would qualify the teachers for that, so that's a huge win too, because that's a lot of money that it costs to go to higher ed right now, so, yes, did somebody, oh, I'm sorry. Last one, another one with the funding is the bill that allows district to use red bud funds for building fund purposes, this might be where we have talked, Natalie, that we could use some of that for insurance premiums, so it could be used for anything that we would use our building funds on, okay, so.
Gives more flexibility.
Correct, yeah, mhm, and one thing I'm really excited about, that I think aligns with Broken Arrow's, what we have in place right now, is modernizing our graduation curriculum, so I'm really excited about this one, it's more focused on pathways rather than something that 1960 we felt like you needed, because really, that's been about that long since we've changed or over, you know, rewrote our curriculum requirements for students, so what it does is allow kids to take more electives to meet their graduation requirements that are pathway, so a kiddo who doesn't want to take pre-calc or Algebra III could go in and take VoAg, and he could take that, and if we as a board say that's going to meet one of you, that's a pathway, then that's the elective, so we had been working over the last few years, a catalog that will outline any type of career field, any job, and listed, like, if you're 9th grade, take these courses, if you're 10th, 11th, 12th, and then here are electives that will support that pathway, so we have the work started, so I feel like this aligns and really supports what Broken Arrow's trying to do with their workforce and going more career-focused.
Yeah, that's awesome.
I think really that's about it, that I was going to share with you guys, the one last thing I would like to do a shout out is, one of our student leaderships, Parker Wagner, he had visited with Senator Hayes and asked him if he would put forward a bill that would allow us to have a car tag that's for Broken Arrow High School, and so, he's doing it, so I guess, yeah, so he put it forward, and he, I talked to Senator Hayes, and he's like, he feels like there's no problem, he presented it and it was, had momentum, so, but it does have to have legislative approval to do that, so.
Hey, just another piece of evidence that a voice can make a difference.
Absolutely.
That's right.
Is there, are there any questions or anything I can clarify or anything?
That was a lot, but thank you, that was great.
I know, it is a lot, I apologize.
Seriously, it's been a busy, busy time, so.
Yeah, I do think it's making a difference though, that us being there and having conversations and building relationships, I do feel like we've gotten some momentum in some areas, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowser.
Good evening, Mr. Perry, members of the board, first item that I bring to you is for a purchase of Kyocera copiers, so for 101 of those copiers, part of our bond dollars at work, to be able to replace the fleet, just for your frame of reference, we have about 200 copiers in the district as a total, so this will replace about half of them, meaning that the average age of the fleet would be under three years old, so it's a way to maintain our equipment and technology in the district.
I appreciate your team listening to our teachers all across the district, because the copiers are very valuable in a site, and that had come up, and you all took that input and put something to action, so thank you.
Absolutely.
And just to have one little question around this, I know in the past, we've had these conversations about leasing versus buying, can you kind of talk to that, I know you've looked at that before.
Yeah.
It's much better the way we're going versus.
Yeah, the, what we are doing is unique in a lot of ways, because we actually have three different technicians that are certified to be able to work or repair our copiers, and so when we do cost analysis and look at price per page and the maintenance agreements that are associated with copiers, over the long haul, it just really is more expensive, it's better to maintain our own fleet, we also have more control over that, which puts us in a better position, I think, to be able to kind of take care of things and manage dollars as we move forward, decide when it's time to move on from a copier versus not, and so that's, this decision saves us money, but also will ensure that our teachers have the resources they need as well.
Perfect, thank you.
I make a motion to approve?
A second.
Okay, a motion's been made, and second, please call the roll.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Girlet?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, and the next item is actually really exciting, and not that copiers aren't exciting, but this one is really exciting, in that, you know, when we talk about cybersecurity and trying to be able to maintain the safety of our staff and students as they operate online, you'll never get to a spot where things are 100% safe or 100% secure, it's all about layers, and so, Mr. Shihada and his team were made aware of a grant opportunity back in July through the Oklahoma Department of Homeland Security, and in the process of applying for those grants, we actually, we actually put in three separate applications for grants, hoping to get one, we actually got all three, and so the cool part about it is that it'll provide, not to get too far into the weeds, but it will provide a multi-factor authentication for users as they log onto their machines, it'll provide endpoint security for those individual machines that are used around the district to ensure that they're not infected or have malware on them, and additionally, it'll provide, probably one of the biggest holes in our security to date, is it'll provide email filtering, we get so many viruses and malware attacks that happen through email, where people click a link that they shouldn't click, that kind of thing, and so it'll provide security that way, so it's three separate layers that we don't have today, that will provide a whole lot more safety for our staff and students, and so the cool part about the grant is that our obligation is about 10% of the total cost, ballpark is $500,000 to $600,000, so our part will be $50,000 to $60,000, and that's for a three-year agreement for each of those particular, you know, subscriptions, so it's not just a one, you know, a one-year deal, it's over the course of three years, which gives me peace of mind as we move forward, and just always looking for ways to be able to improve that security and make sure, you know, minimize that threat, I always in the back of my mind, and Ali and I talk about this a lot, but think about the malware attack that we had in 2019, and just the, what it did to us, and how we had to recover, and we've taken lots of steps to ensure that, you know, we could spin back up very quickly, but these three items will certainly help ensure our safety moving forward, so I just ask for your approval tonight, we actually, the last step, so we've been awarded, been notified that we've been awarded those grants, but the next step is we're waiting on the paperwork from, actually from FEMA, to award the funding for those grants, and so we're just asking for your approval to be able to move forward with that, whenever we get those funding documents from FEMA, since they're time-sensitive, we just wanted to go ahead and bring this to the board this evening.
So we have another round of these coming back with the dollar amounts or anything, or is this just really getting you all into that future, into that next step, and that's all you need?
Yep, that's all, that's all we need.
Okay, perfect.
But the dollar amounts, roughly $600,000?
Yeah, roughly $600,000 in grant money, and so we're.
That's incredible.
We'll be obliged for about $60,000 of that, $600,000.
Any, anything, I mean, anything we can do to add those layers is exceptionally beneficial, because you can never honestly get to a destination, it's a journey.
Yeah.
These guys try every avenue, I mean, I say these guys, it's anybody, I mean.
Right.
The hackers just will try any way to get to you, and so.
The moment, the moment which you think you have arrived, that's a dangerous place to be.
Yes, it is, so glad to see this.
We celebrate all of our grant dollars, big or small, and there's some that we celebrate 10,000, but 600,000 is huge.
That's cool.
Yeah, that's.
All right, any other questions, comments?
I make a motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, a motion's been made, and second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Girlet?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is new business, we have none, okay, the next item, 108, okay. The reason for this meeting is to conduct a due process hearing on the out-of-school suspension of Student A. The order of the hearing will follow the agenda of this meeting, this agenda provides the, that both the administration and the student are given the opportunity to make an opening statement, the administration will then call its witnesses, with the student having the opportunity for cross-examination, the student will then call his witnesses, which are subject to cross-examination, both sides will be allowed to call rebuttal witnesses, and then both sides will have time to make closing arguments to the board. If the student, his parent, legal guardian, or attorney wish, the entire hearing may be conducted in executive session, if the hearing has not been conducted in executive session, then after all of the evidence has been presented, and only at the request of Student A, his parents, or legal guardians, the board may convene in executive session to discuss and deliberate on the documents and other evidence presented, and will return to open session, otherwise, the board will discuss and deliberate on the documents and other evidence presented in open session. Then in open session, the board will vote to adopt the findings of fact, that is, what facts the board finds have been shown from the evidence, and it will vote to determine guilt or innocence of the student, determine the reasonableness of the suspension, and whether to affirm, modify, or overturn the suspension of the student. This hearing is to be an informal administrative hearing that will not be governed by the strict rules of evidence, such as would be used in a court proceeding, thus the board may hear hearsay evidence that it finds to have some merit in establishing facts. The Vice President of the Board will make any rulings needed regarding evidence, during this process, the student is entitled to be represented by legal counsel, only witnesses and parties and their representatives will be addressing the board, and thus, no statements from anyone in the audience will be heard. Witnesses will be sworn to tell the truth, which oath will be administered by the Board Vice President or his designee. The administration is present through Derek Blackburn, Executive Director of Student Services, and the district is not represented by legal counsel, Student A and his parent or legal guardian are or are not present, and does or does not have an attorney pairing for them. The parties to the hearing have the right to invoke the rule of sequestration, which means. means that any witnesses who are expected to be called as witnesses, except for the parties, cannot be present in the room when other witnesses will be testifying. Does either party wish to invoke the rule of sequestration? Okay.
I don't, I don't understand that. I'm here with the...
We'll wait a minute.
Mr. Denton, the parent of Student A is here.
Okay.
And she would like to invoke the rule of sequestration.
Okay, so have the parties...
And she will, she would also like for this to proceed in executive session, but she will answer that.
Yeah, I'll ask that question, okay. So with, with the revoke, with the invoke of Rule of Sequestration, I need to have the respective witnesses identified, and have the witnesses sworn?
We have three over here, Ms. Quaid, Ms. Prewer, Ms. Moore, thank you, and Ms. Shannon.
As well as the parties, the parties would stand who may be testifying at the hearing. Okay, go ahead. All right, yeah, go ahead and stand up, and I'll just administer the oath, if that's what we need.
Do we need to?
Tell all the witnesses right now, so we don't have to do it individually during the hearing.
Okay, please.
Okay. Have to be theatrical about this. Raise your right hand. Yes.
Okay.
All right. These who are affirming that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Okay, thank you, guys. Do the, so recognizing that we'll have this in the executive session, any, do the board members, or the parties, or their representatives have any questions concerning the procedures for this hearing? And so, asking, does the parent or guardian want this hearing to be conducted in executive session? Okay, recognizing that this will be held in executive session, what we have decided is to have the, we have decided to have the executive session here in this room, since some of the rooms might be a little more tight, so I need to excuse everyone that will not be involved in this discussion. To go into executives...
I make a motion to move to executive session. I second.
Okay, a motion's been made, and a second, please call the roll.
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Yes. So we will reconvene in executive session in three minutes.